Light Township North Huntington Board of Commissioners, Special Meeting for Thursday, October 13, 2022, at 7:04 PM. Roll call, Commissioner Folk.
Commissioner Stumpf.
Here.
Commissioner Atwood. Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Zona. Commissioner Windgren.
Here.
Commissioner Goss.
Here.
President Haggas.
Here. Can everyone please stand and listen to the legislative meetings?
(inaudible)
If any residents would like to speak tonight, please sign the book in the podium. Thank you. First residence, Kim, if you could just come up on the podium, state your name and address or the rec director, please.
Hi, my name is Kim Corral. My address is 912 Sarah Williams Drive, 91. Okay, so two years ago, I saw Rich Gray at the police station, and I said, you know what the up and coming sport is? It's pickleball. And pickleball is taken off everywhere. And Phil has pickleball, Greenberg has pickleball, Penrathor has pickleball, North Huntington does not have any pickleball. So I made my own pickleball court on my road. And I just think it would be a good thing for the community to try it out, put one pickleball court somewhere, and to see. Young kids can play, middle-aged can play, old people can play. Pickleball is a combination between tennis, ping pong, badminton, you play with a little racket, with a wicker ball. And it doesn't really cost that much to put a pickleball court in. My mom and her boyfriend put one in. And I don't know, I thought Lyons Park would be a good place to put it. There's a walking track, the middle section, you don't need a fence, you just need a flat area. I put tape down as my lines. You can paint them. It's a 20 by 44 area, and I think we could put a pickleball court in to see if it's going well. Makes sense in 2028, it might turn into a hobby sport, too. So I just think it's something for our community to try and see if it would take off. So.
Thank you. Next, residence Kathy.
Hi, I'm Kathy Heights. I live at 1464 Berry Drive, North Huntington, and I'm here to support Kim in the pickleball. I'm retired now, and I feel like North Huntington doesn't have a whole lot for their older community, and I think it's a great thing. I have a sister-in-law in California, she's been playing pickleball for years out there. It's like, it's finally coming around to our area. It took a while, and I've played on her street, on her pickleball court, and I'm here to support that.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all the residents that signed up to speak tonight. Response to residence input?
I like the idea. I really do. I think there's no reason why we can't add it to our parks and recreation, as an addition. I see no reason why we shouldn't. Great exercise for people that want to stay healthy.
I just found out about pickleball last fall, when I was actually campaigning for this position, and two different people, a man and a woman, two different residences, both talked to me about pickleball. And I was like, what is this? You know? And they were both, like, so passionate about it. The one said he goes to Hemfield Township, and then the woman said she goes to Monroeville. So we have discussed it here on the board, just like casual talk is maybe something in the future. But I know that it is pretty simple, I guess, economic. I guess it's just, the one person said you can basically use a tennis court and, like, add a couple lines even, so. I mean, I haven't really looked into it, but I know it is something. Yeah. Yeah. So, like, yeah, and then the other day on the news, I saw that thing about the, it could be, like, in the Olympic, in the Olympic sport, yeah. And I'm like, wow, this is, this is something. This is huge, I guess. So, yeah, I think it would be something really cool to look into, you know, maybe get some donations and maybe see what we can come up with.
Just a little bit of information, I represent Plumborough. We're building a new municipal building. They've put pickleball courts in at the municipal building, so it is catching on.
And the other responses, yes, and input?
I would just like to thank Kim and Kathy for coming, as you said you would, and encourage you to come next week also, when the rec director is here.
I did speak to them.
Oh, you did? Since, since we talked?
No, I've since.
Okay.
That's why I made my own pickleball court. I have a picture of it. If anybody wants to come and play, you can come play with me.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm familiar with pickleball, and I think it's great, and it's growing. At Lyons Park, I never thought about it, but Lyons Park is designed as a stormwater retention pond, so you really can't put much there because it's going to get ruined. But I think, I like your idea of the pickleball court. If the board is okay, we can move forward of trying to design some pickleball courts in the upper part of Lyons Park, away from the water. Yeah.
Can we possibly consider the pervious pavement? There's a demonstration at the Westmoreland Conservation District. Not sure if that would help in that situation.
And if you want to see pervious pavement, Virginia, thanks for bringing that up. You know, there's that bus station there by Stewartsville Elementary School, Westmoreland County Bus. That parking lot is really technologically advanced and very, very cool. It has the pervious, and it was designed to absorb the water rather than rush it off and let somebody down the road, you know, take on that punishment of water. So, really cool situation. Again, I tell people to go look at it, it's pretty nifty, and it's very nice.
And it does hold up pretty well.
What is that? I'm sorry?
It's called pervious pavement. And if he says it's at the parking area, the...
Public.
The park and ride at, by the sheets.
Up by sheets, up in.
You could look at it there, or they have a, at the Conservation District on Donahue Road in Greensburg, they have stormwater designs all through the grounds there.
All right. Thank you. Work session discussion topics, Manager Folk?
Sure. Item number one, action to ratify Resolution Number 134 of 2022, Designating the Township President and Manager to Execute All Documents and Agreements with a Commonwealth Financing Authority.
Motion to approve or ratify?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Can you go into greater depth so the people out there understand what that money is, how much the money is, and what it's for, please?
Sure. For this resolution, it's in the amount of $139,208 from the statewide local share assessment grant for the purchase of four police vehicles for the municipality.
Thank you.
I would just, this is Ron, if I can, I would just have a question on why, do we have to vote on these today? Because this is a work session, and I would think that we would vote on all this tomorrow or next week at the regular meeting.
According to the Sunshine Act, whenever you ratify, a motion has to be done at the next public meeting. And then that's why we are doing it now.
So we vote to ratify this today, but then we vote on it again next week?
No, we're voting to ratify it now. We typically don't vote at our special meetings, but for this case, we are for this application of a...
Your meetings are advertised in a way that you can vote on them, just so everybody understands that, that you advertise these as general business purposes, so this can be voted on tonight or next week, but right now, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just commenting under the, after the second was made, and we have to open for discussion. And again, I would just say the same thing. I'm not opposed to this, I just, I don't particularly like that we vote at, on work sessions when it's called a work session, and we have a regular meeting next week. That's just my opinion on that, but, I mean, I'm for this, I just think the proper time to vote is next week.
Any other discussion?
Just for the record, having done the math, we're looking at $34,802 per vehicle.
Correct.
And given the vehicle problem, with the chip problem throughout the, not only this nation, but it's throughout the world, $34,802 is not really, in today's numbers, a bad number for a vehicle. I wish they were lower, I honest to God I do, for the sake of all of us that are purchasing vehicles, but I do know that $34,802 is not a bad number. And do we know what kind of vehicles they are specifically?
They're 2022 police utilities, so they're the Explorers.
Any other discussion?
Yes. I understand what Ron is saying, but as Manager Folk said, the, according to the Sunshine Law, we should, we must actually vote on this at the next public meeting, which is tonight, but I wanted to remind someone, in fact, the new board members that may not be familiar, that the reason we have a work session was originally designed to address planning and zoning items, so that we wouldn't hold up developers. If they brought a plan to the township and it came before us, usually we would have questions, and rather than delay them an extra month, we started having a meeting, a work session meeting, primarily strictly for planning and zoning issues, so that if we had questions, we could get answers from the developer by the next meeting, six days later, and we could vote on it, rather than hold them up for a month. Now, over the years, we have generally had a policy where we don't vote at a work session, unless it's an urgent, time-critical topic. We've done that before on many items, including demolitions, when the public is at peril, we approve a demolition contract, something like that. So this, in order to comply with the transparency of the Sunshine Law, we must do it at the first public meeting, which is tonight, so. I mean, to be honest, there are some topics on this agenda for discussion that I'm hoping to move to executive session, and some of them that may not need to be here because it gets redundant if you talk about it but don't vote on it tonight, and then talk about it again next week. If it's a non-controversial issue, whereas, like, paying a bill, milling and paving, things of that nature, that normally we would question anyway when the motion is brought up to pave, or to pay it at the regular meeting, that could be answered simply, those items can be held to the regular meeting, so we don't get redundant and drag things out we're not really going to talk about anyway, like the resignation on the next page. We're going to accept that, we always do, so why have it...
Rich, do you have anything more to talk about, about the motion, the second?
Yes, I'm almost done.
Well, that's really not to do with what we're talking about right now. You got anything else on that?
Okay. No, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion and the second?
Yeah, Harry, how did we, what program, just for everybody that's out there, what program does this township use in order to purchase these vehicles?
Co-Stars.
Coldstar, CodeStars?
Co-Stars, yes.
Could you tell the folks about that, just a smidge? I'm sorry, not, just so people are educated and know what we are doing here. It's important for the transparency.
Sure.
I believe that people should know.
Sure. Co-Stars is a statewide vendor program where vendors put in, the state puts out bids for prices, and then the vendors put in their bids, their specs, and things like that. If the municipality wants to purchase off the Co-Stars, you bypass the bidding requirements, for example, vehicles, street sweepers, police cars, things like that, you can just purchase it right off of the Co-Star vendor. But we do do our due diligence and get three quotes, as with the police cars in this matter, these three vehicles. I think the second highest was $38,000 or $42,000 from another vendor. Yeah, it was significantly higher.
So could we say financially, it is fiscally smart to go through CodeStar for the sake of the township and citizens and taxation of the citizens?
Yes.
It benefits our constituents.
Correct.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other discussion on the motion and the second? All unfair by state and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Action to ratify Resolution Number 135 of 2022, Designating the Township President and Manager to Execute All Documents and Agreements with a Commonwealth Financing Authority.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All unfair by state and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Next, in front of you is pay application number seven, in the amount of $44,392.50 to East West Manufacturing for the townhouse HVAC renovation. This will be paid out of the ARPA funds for the motion of next week, and we still have some retainage left.
Motion, pay application number seven?
Just for discussion.
Question in regards to discussion. What payment number is this? Number seven?
Number seven.
How many more are left?
I believe two, I believe one more is left.
All right. Are we paying as we go, as we see construction completion? In other words, is this in phases?
Yes, they still have to do the balancing of the building.
Right. And we check that off before we issue that check?
Correct.
I'd like to hear that. Thank you very much.
Next for discussion is pay app, or change orders, the amount of $99,850.41 for the 2022 Million in Resurfacing Program. The reason why those were increased is because of the, well, the asphalt fuel, or the asphalt oil price index went up significantly through the year because of the oil prices. And this is being paid out of the liquid fuels funded. Next up is pay application number two, in the amount of $670,572.95 to A. Libroney for the 2022 Million in Resurfacing Program. This is paid out of the liquid fuels. Next is pay application number one, in the amount of $125,661 to Russell Standard for the 2022 Bitumis Fiber Reinforcement Seal Coat Program Contract Number 2022-2. This will be paid out of the liquid fuels. Moving on is pay application number one, in the amount of $58,909.78 to JP Operations for the Mechanic Stormwater Improvement Project, to be paid out of the general fund. Next will be the CDBG 2023 Grant Application Smittle on behalf of the North Huntington Township Municipal Authority for Residential Lateral Sanitary Sewer Replacement, in the amount of $176,000. No questions. Moving forward on to the street sweeper. As you know, we did purchase a street sweeper from A&amp;H Equipment. The way it was designed, a typical street sweeper has two motors, one to power the vehicle, and one to power the unit itself. This was a new design, it only has one engine, it does not meet our needs, and so therefore, we would like to return it and purchase another street sweeper, and I'll let Rich answer any questions, if you have any.
Rich, could you tell us why the one-engine machine is not working as opposed to a two-engine machine?
Well, again, as what Manager Folk had mentioned, you know, we bought the street sweeper, and it's like the new design that they have, it just doesn't have the power to, you know, do what we needed to do here. There was a definite cost savings involved in buying a single-engine design versus the typical, traditional two-engine design with the auxiliary engine. That's the reason that we, you know, considered it. They brought it down for a demonstration, when they brought it down for the demonstration, we deployed it on some of the streets that we have here in the township, and it seemed, you know, obviously, it worked rather well. We went ahead and moved forward with the purchase of it. Whenever the new sweeper, of course, it took almost a year and a half to come in, whenever it did finally come in, you know, we used it for roughly about a week, and the operator was having some issues with this sweeper going up some steep grades. I mean, it would go up so far and shut down. We couldn't figure it out, their technicians from A&amp;H came down, they looked at it, they went all over it and stuff. They were looking at kind of trial and error and saying, you know, well, try this and try that. It still wasn't working. They took it back to the dealership, they actually, which I had certain, a lot of concerns with, they upped the horsepower on the machine, which isn't typical, but they said that they could do it. They brought it back, and the thing went a little bit further up some of the hills that we had, but it still wouldn't sweep, it'd go up so far and shut down. So obviously, you know, we couldn't accept something like that. So, you know, we returned the sweeper. They did give us, and I'm looking here, if you've seen the memo that I put out, they did give us a quote on our typical, the two typical two-engine design with the auxiliary engine, and it was considerable amount of money. That being said, you know, of course, we buy this stuff off of state contract, as we mentioned, we buy a lot of our equipment through state off the Co-Star program, like the police cars and et cetera. US Municipal, who has the Johnson Sweeper, and these are the two leading sweeper manufacturers in the country, they came back with a better quote. Still more money than the single-engine design, it's a dual-engine, the typical design, but it's, you know, a little bit more, but a lot less than A&amp;H had quoted us. Actually, we got a call on Monday from US Municipal Supply, they said that they would be able to provide us a new sweeper by the end of the year. You know, they called and said that, you know, another municipality turned it down that had ordered it over a year ago, and they do have one available immediately. And if you've seen in my memo, if there was some conclusion to this, we were able to get some, we were able to bypass our old sweeper and get it operational. So we have been, it's not like we haven't been going for a street sweeper. It's able to work. The technician at A&amp;H who gave us this advice to try this method to be able to get it operational, you know, he basically said, we're on borrowed time here. It's just, it's wore out. I mean, they were toning it from the back road at the beginning of the week. Their chain, they had a chain and brought it in. It was, it was actually an issue not with the sweeping apparatus, but with the mechanical of the chassis. It was a minor fix, 500 bucks a minor fix, but, you know, so it is back on the road again, you know, this week, we have it operational again, but, you know, we're on borrowed time with this thing. A sweeper, when you start getting up to about 8,000 hours on this equipment, you know, that's when you should start, you start having maintenance issues, and it's time to, it's towards the end of its service life. Our sweeper currently is, I don't even know exactly, but it's over 10,000 hours. I mean, I proposed this three years ago, and had we, you know, we had done it three years ago, of course, hindsight's 20/20 here, you know, we probably won't be in the position that we're in. You know, we've dumped a lot of money into this thing, $20,000, it needs new tires, $3,000, you know? The sweeper's done, and it's, we have no really other options unless you want to buy a sweeper, and that would be up to you folks.
What do you mean they bypassed something?
Yeah, and I can't actually explain it myself, because, you know, I don't have a real lot of mechanical, you know, I'm not very mechanically inclined, but a technician at the dealership told us, well, try this, try that, and you may be able to get it working temporarily, and, you know, it's not going to last, but hey, you might be able to use it. So, you know, our guys were able to do some, you know, tear it down a little bit, do some things, and got it operational.
Well, we've, we've had it, had it out for most of the summer, right? How much do we use it in the winter?
We use it a considerable amount of time in the winter. I mean, if it's over, you know, 35 degrees, 40 degrees, which happens, you know, a good bit of time, you know, we'll use it as much as we can. We have over 600 and some streets, and, you know, one street sweeper, so in most cases, you know, the streets are getting swept, your lucky ones are, of course, it also determined on the volume of usage and where the streets are, but we use our street sweeper pretty much, as much as possible. We, it gets a lot, a lot of usage. It's a 2012. The mileage, I don't even know what the mileage is, because that's so insignificant based on the, the equipment itself, it basically goes by the hours.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious if it's been out that much, and I've heard for quite a while, it was on its last leg, it's wore out, it's all this, and then we were able to get it running for a while. I'm a guy that, like Chief and I go, we're going, I drive a 94 Blazer, you know?
Right, I understand.
I try and get every penny out of it. I would, I'm surprised that we got it running if it was on its last legs. That, that's all.
Yeah, it wouldn't sweep, it wasn't operational, those guys were able to, you know, do whatever to be able to...
Right.
And it's like, oh, wow, it works.
Okay. Well, I'd rent it till it dies.
Yeah. The only downfall of that is, then we'll probably get less for it, you know, if we sell it outright, or let, you know, or trade it if they're willing to take it on the trade. At least if it's running, it's worth probably a little bit more than if it's a pile of metal.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm probably going to get a little rough on you.
Oh.
So just, it's out of love.
Oh.
You know what it is, brother.
Oh, I know, start swinging.
Start swinging, I'm okay, here we go. So we were $289,289,910. Single engine, not enough for our hills in southwestern Pennsylvania. I get it. Recommendation is, after we do this and that, recommendation is, let's go to a two-engine system, get you to have the power to go up that street for $341,219, which is an additional difference of $51,309. All right, here comes the expletive, Rich. Ouch. That hurts. But if I read on in your memo, you guys got somebody to say, hey, we'll throw you guys a little bit of a bone, so we'll take that $341 and bring it down to $307,599. Okay, here's Ryan. Who pays for that? Simple answer, we know who pays for that, the taxpayers.
Right.
It's a lot of money, brother.
Oh, it certainly is.
I don't like it that it's that much money, because I know our 31,000 constituents in this township work hard for their money, and the last time I checked in everybody's backyard, I've yet to find anybody holding a money tree. And so my concern is, honest to God, I really want you to think about this, and not to diminish your response, really, 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 honest to God, how important is it to have a street sweeper, when, and we can't hold construction companies responsible, well, we got to clean up? No. Construction companies that are bringing mud on a site, onto the public roads, are responsible to clean said roads. It shouldn't be up to them to call the township and go, hey, we need the street sweeper over here. Nay, nay, contractor, I would say it's your responsibility. You mucked up that street, you clean it up. So with that said, honest to God, how really important is it to have a street sweeper? Because I, I'm against it, I'll tell you that right now. So I need you to sell me and the constituents on that price tag, even if it is $307.
What we're ultimately looking at, so we got the money back that was budgeted for the $289,900, so we're talking about a $20,000, not even dollar difference for the two-motor engine for the low... So we're talking about a 20,000, not even dollar difference for the two-motor engine for the low, low budget. Now granted, I'm not saying 20,000 isn't a fair amount of money, but to have a piece of equipment that they can actually use and not worry about shutting off when they're going up or down a hill.
I get that, but how really important is this piece of equipment?
It is one of the most.
I was going to say, I think it's extremely important, especially for the safety of our communities. I mean.
They use it also, not just for street sweeping, they use it as a sucker.
Right, it's a vacuum.
It sucks up nails, so you're not blowing out your tires for motorcyclists, you know, or just even you and your car. All of the salt and the sand from the winter, like, it, it's really important.
It also, I mean, it's a vacuum, it's just not a sweeper, it's a, it's a vacuum. We use it on drainage, we suck out inlets with it, it has a big tube on the back, just like on your sweeper, how you pull the tube off and you want to suck in the corners and stuff like that. You know, for the past year, I mean, we have to get a couple guys to lift the grate off and actually get a hole and shovel and then, you know, throw it in the back of the truck because we're not going to put that mud and dirt and debris. Whenever you can get, just get a hose and go, and it sucks it out in about 30 seconds. I mean, that's just one instance.
For drainage, like, it's really important.
Commissioner Goss, that's an MS4 requirement to sweep our streets. It is a requirement, we get credits for that.
I did not know that, okay. The reason why I'm asking these questions is, I want the folks to know that this isn't just, "Hey, here's, here it is on a piece of paper and let's vote on it." Let's tell the people what this is all about. Let's educate them, even if I've got to ask 10 questions and that is questions, help educate everybody, myself included, then we can have a better approach on what we decide on what to purchase and what not to purchase. It's just so we're really super clear. I, you know, I believe and honest to God, I say the word and I don't use it lightly. Transparency and education.
Right.
If we had more of it, I think we could resolve more of our problems in our lives. And that's why I'm asking so many questions. And I want to make sure that the money spent by this township is deserving of the people of this township, that they would deserve this equipment. Harry just told us that it is an MS4 requirement.
It is.
Something I bet a lot of citizens don't know that.
I mean, in, in your concerns about, you know, the, the money aspect of it, I'm not sure, last year I believe there was $60,000 that was actually budgeted, we're going to finance this and whatever. So, I mean, it's just stretching the financing out a little bit. So, you know, we're not paying for that whole 307,000 is going to come out of, you know, this year's budget or next year's budget. It's, you know, it's over, I believe initially I had it set up for a three-year payment program, but whatever, Harry decides how we're going to go proceed with the financing. One other thing I'd like to mention is, you know, you had brought up like these contractors and stuff for dirtying up our streets. And, and of course, you know, you have that on occasion. But I do want you to know that whenever we have a big project that's going on and if there is an incidence where, you know, a contractor or developer is, you know, making a mess on our streets, we've actually, they've actually paid us before, we're, they've set up an escrow account and, you know, and we take the money out of their escrow account for, you know, the, the use of street sweeper. We haven't recently, but we have done that before in the past. So on bigger projects and things of that nature, you know, we do charge outside to contractors and developers for the use of our equipment.
You know, there's an old saying, knowing and knowing is half the battle. And for you guys that grew up, guys and girls that grew up on G.I. Joe back in the 70s and 80s, do you guys know that, remember that TV show?
No, which G.I. Joe?
Knowing, what? How dare you? And knowing is half the battle?
I'm young, I don't know that.
And it really is, that's why I ask the questions that I do. I want folks to get the most out of what they're paying taxes for. And, and if they know what they're paying taxes for, it doesn't seem like things are being hidden. And I thank you all for, you know, adding into this great conversation. I really do, thank you.
It certainly is a lot of money, but in this construction industry, it's, it's like the going, hey, on a fire truck, a pumper truck costs 500,000 these days. I mean, it's, it's insane, it truly is, but that's what we're all faced with.
Rich, could I just make sure that when we're buying this, we're not buying somebody's secondhand rejected piece of machinery and it's not reconditioned or anything like that, that they're giving us this lower price?
Oh, no, it's brand new, you know, 2023 chassis, you know, all the warranties, dealer warranty ship and the whole nine yards.
Okay. And didn't we originally finance this?
For five years.
Returning this piece of equipment, I would assume that that vehicle would have a title. Does that in any way change our financing with the bank?
No, we did not move forward with that because we wanted to make sure that it met our needs before we made any payments or anything.
Right.
That's great.
Yeah, there was no exchange of anything financially.
Do we know why the other municipality backed out?
The one that, the available sweeper as of now?
Yes.
I don't know that information, I don't have that information. All I know is U.S. Municipal Supply, they have another one ordered. It was anticipating on coming in, excuse me, at the end of the year. They felt that they could have us one by then. You know, he just called me and said, "Hey, you know, good news is some municipality out east, you know, they decided not to go ahead and, and get their sweeper." It's the same exact model, all the same, same things.
I just wondered if they heard something about the model, you know?
Yeah, I mean, this is the dual-engine, I mean, this isn't the single, single-engine design that the new innovated, innovation that Elgin had come out with and.
Okay.
As, as a follow-up to that question on financing, now does this, this change our financing rate with the bank?
I anticipate it will, but I do have that budgeted.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the street sweeper?
Okay, moving forward, I did receive a letter from the Western Westmoreland Municipal Authority notifying of us, notifying the Board of a vacancy. Sharon Matters has submitted her resignation letter from the North Huntington Township Recreational Advisory Board. She is a Norwin School District appointee, so she is appointed, or that position is appointed by the Norwin School District. The Code Appeals Board term limits, I did provide you with a copy of the ordinance passed in 2006. I believe Commissioner Gray wanted to discuss that from the previous meeting about amending that ordinance.
Yes, I, since I had spoken with Ryan, who told me that's part of the state code. And if we would put a term limit on that, we would have to apply or get the permission of the state, is that right?
Correct, so the, the state PAUCC in their Board of Appeals section states that a member of the Board of Appeals holds office at the pleasure of the municipality's governing body. So they don't define a term limit. And then I have an ordinance from 2012 when the township adopted the PAUCC code sections. And then it's, we adopt those as they change. So in perpetuity, we, if they make a change, we adopt that by this ordinance. And so our ordinance also states that there is no limit for the Code Appeal Board.
But they serve at the pleasure, so that means they can be taken.
Be reappointed or.
At any time, council can change that.
And there's no defined term, but, but the way I understand it is that the PAUCC would have to essentially approve this and then we'd have to amend our ordinance to, to define those term limits.
But if we do nothing, this board can eliminate or take care of a, a member that they have some reason to, to replace at any time.
Sure.
Because it's at the pleasure.
Yeah.
That makes sense, okay.
So however.
And these, these members, as I recollect, are defined also in the regulations. You've got to have an architect, you've got to have certain individuals, so it's difficult to fill that.
Says shall be qualified by training and experience to pass on matters pertaining to building construction. Training and experience may consist of licensure as an architect or engineer, experience in the construction industry and training or experience as an inspector or plan reviewer.
It's hard to find people to fill that, that board.
And it says you can actually go outside your municipal borders. Some places set up a joint board where three members serve two or three different municipalities if it's hard to find members.
And how active is this board?
When's the last time they've met?
Two, two cases in the last seven years. There was a, there was a hearing in 2015 and then this most recent one a couple months ago. And prior to 15, we couldn't find anything in our records. And that's, and our strong record-keeping goes back to around 2000, 2001. So not very often.
Well, I, I brought this up originally because I'm opposed to indefinite terms. But obviously from the 2006 and 2012 adoption of these items, I must have voted for it or maybe not. But I do remember having a discussion at the time about how rarely they meet and we could replace them at any time. I'm still opposed to indefinite terms. I think that it's easier to renew someone, just vote every three, four years, whatever it is, to reapprove them on the board. Because if there is a person that the board would want to get rid of for any particular reason, a lot of times there's not the political will to bring that up at random. So it's easier to wait till a term expires, talk about it and go yes, no, and, and make a decision at that point. I'm still opposed to the indefinite term, but if nobody else has any comment, then I guess it dies.
I understand your, what of not having indefinite term, but to me, this is even some aspects worse because you can make a decision tomorrow if you don't want somebody. And I know what you said, and some people don't have maybe the willpower to do that, but I think this gives us more flexibility, if anything, that if we would decide to get rid of a board member, we could get rid of them tomorrow versus waiting two or three years.
Right, I see that point.
Well, just to add my two cents, maybe we unofficially look at it every three, four years because we had a member move away three years ago to nobody's knowledge. So we were trying to contact the board members and, and one was in North Carolina.
Right.
And he said, "I won't be able to make the hearing," so.
That's a point in my favor because if we send a letter out and we would know they moved.
I think Ryan has a good idea there. He can, we can unofficially maybe revisit it every two to four years and just go with that. Any other discussion? Thank you.
All right, item number 13, ordinance proposal and memorandum of, memorandum of agreement with intergovernmental police mutual aid agreement for SWAT. Do have an ordinance and a MMO. Next week's meeting, our board, the commissioners will have to advertise an ordinance or advertise, make a correction, I apologize. At next week's meeting, the board will have to make a motion to advertise the ordinance for this intergovernmental police mutual aid agreement. Is there any questions? Moving on, item number 14, ordinance proposal of Act 57 of 2022, amending the local tax collection law, waiving the additional charges for, for real estate taxes in certain situations. So the state this year enacted a requirement that municipalities will have to adopt a resolution or an ordinance directing their tax collector to implement its provisions. Basically, if the tax, if, if the resident did not receive a tax bill within the first year, then the penalties and interest can be waived. And there is a sample ordinance in your packet. The solicitor can draft one if you want any changes done to it. And we would have to make a motion to advertise at the next week's meeting. Okay, next is a 2023 budget update. So at this month, our, our, this month, our action is the budget review with the Board of Commissioners. And then I'll compile everything together with my budget message and present to the board for some more ordinances and adoptions for next month. The changes that we made, it increased the expenditures by 328,000. We're going to utilize 844,910 of the general fund reserve slash ARPA money to balance the budget, which will leave 5.6 million in the general fund reserve, or 39% of the revenue because the board does have a policy to maintain that at 25%. The biggest increase was after we did our presentation, we received our health insurance numbers. They were increased by 6% for active employees and 11% for retirees. And what that came up to is about 113,000 increase for health insurance for employees and retirees. So tonight we'll discuss the light fund. This is levied streetlights throughout the municipality. We collect around 226,000. We're going to have about 45,000 carried over with an expenditure of 222,000 next year. So we should end up with a surplus around 49,000. Any questions about the light fund? The water fund, this is your hydrants, again, these are taxed. We estimate that we're going to carry over 32,000. We'll be collecting about 53,000 in taxes and with the payments, new hydrants, special projects that are continuing to be budgeted, about a 57,000 expenditure with a, with a revenue of, or carryover surplus going into 2024 of 28,000. Any questions? Moving on to the fire service fund, the, the tax collection. We're anticipating about 22,000 be carried over. Of course, after we make the payment to the fire departments, there are still some tax payments coming in and we anticipate about 22,000 of that to be carried over. Estimated about a 506,000, 100, or 506,000 collected next year. We are 505,000 in collections thus far this year. And of course, that goes all to the fire departments and we anticipate cutting a check to each fire department of 75,450.
And just for public's notice, how many fire departments are there?
We have seven.
Seven. So every one of the seven departments is going to receive 75,450.
That's what we are anticipating, yes.
Thank you.
Next is the parks fund. We do get money in lieu of taxes for deposits. It's about 30,000. We're not going to have any carryover money that we don't anticipate. We did not do any projects for next year because at the last meeting, the board wanted to wait until the comprehensive plan came out. So this money can just be carried over to the following year or pickleball court. We can move forward and get, get a cost estimate of how much to install a pickleball court at Lyons. There are some DCNR grants coming up. I think they're due by the end of the year. But with the pickleball court, we might be able to put something quickly together, see if we can submit a grant for that. So we can use some of this money as matching money for that pickleball grant. Moving on to liquid fuels, we did receive our letter. We're going to receive 1,134,051 of our liquid fuels and turnback money. And of course, that'll be all allotted towards our paving program next year, which Bob Robinson believes we do seven miles this year. But with the increase of prices, we may only be able to pave five, five miles of roads of next year. The capital reserve, the revenues, we are going to carry about 250,000 going into next, next year. With collections, we collect about 390,000 for a total of 640,000. I did ask the department directors for the police and public works and parks departments to submit their capital wishes and we were able to meet them. With, with the police department, the request of two more vehicles, I think this is great to replace two vehicles every year. And 35,000 towards the, the car and body camera lease for a total of 145,000. For public works, a new dump truck, this is the bigger body dump truck, 225,000. A tar buggy at 25,000 and again, the street sweeper lease is 70,000. I did increase that to take an effect, but I do not have a final number. For the parks department, they've requested a new grass cutting machine at 19,000 and a commercial vehicle trailer at 24,000. For a total of expenditures of 518,000, which should leave us a surplus of 122,000. So if we do not get that grant for. So if we do not get that grant for vehicles, we do have some money available to buy much needed, needed vehicles if that, if that has to happen.
Okay, so if I may, you said something that's important. You used a very special word, a nice word that I like to hear. The word is called grant. We likes grants. Everybody should like grants. Are there any current grants that you guys are working on that you'd like to, that we should know and that the township people should know, that you guys, somebody wonderfully, is working on the benefit for the township and the 31,000 people, this great community?
We are, and, and I will turn it over to Chief Rizzo.
Please, share.
Yes, we just, we just, we've been working hard on a grant and we hit send on it today. And it was, it's a $2.1 million grant. So I don't, you know, I don't know how much we'll get. I don't know if we'll get it all or a portion of it. You know, it was a, it was a technology grant, hardware grant, software grant that we applied for. We're looking for upgrades in our communications equipment, radios, base radios, car radios, body cameras. There's a, there's a lot of need out there. There's also a software component to it with investigative software and all, you know, you know, all those line items. There's, there's some non-sworn personnel costs that we were able to apply for, for reimbursement, and that basically dealt with the dispatch center. Again, the entire grant itself came to just slightly over $2 million. You know, I got to give Lieutenant Arrendis a lot of, a lot of props on this one, too. We worked a lot on this. He worked tirelessly on it, and we'll see where it goes. I think the award dates are somewhere in December. It's a '23 and '24 grant. We're heavy based in '23 because a lot of it is, it's, a lot of it's purchasing with, you know, radios and, and whatnot. And then there's some backend where we were able to push over some of our record management costs and like that into, into '24. If we're able to get the grant, if we're able to get a portion of the grant, if we're able to get all of the grant, it does is it just relieves a tremendous amount of stress on the, on the general fund budget, the police budget, the capital budgets. Some of the things that we applied for was, you know, our in-car, in-car laptop systems are about eight years old. We're upgrading our RMS next year to the brand new system that's coming out. And we were going to a tablet system, which the officers are going to be able to take out of the cars, and it's, and it's mobile now. And it integrates immediately. They'll have the access of that, all that information at their fingertips. So we applied for all those upgrades. And, and that's all in this grant.
So you use the word "we," and I, I need to bring special attention to the people that worked on that. And please feel free to, to your horn, who worked on that?
Well, Lieutenant Arrendis put, put a lot of work into it. When I say "we," it was collaborative. Lieutenant Arrendis, Lieutenant Greg Arrendis.
Okay.
And then, and anybody else.
And you?
And, yes, and me.
And township manager?
And I, no, I did not.
You helped us out. And then, and then the other officers within the department, because we leaned on all of our, all of our specialty officers to deal with, you know, especially like body cams and radios. Our dispatchers were heavily involved in this because our communications equipment, we brought vendors in to, to look at our equipment, to give us quotes and updates, to put us in ballparks and numbers that we needed to deal with. You know, several of our dispatchers, three of them actually, you know, worked hand in hand with our vendors as they came in. And we went through all of our communications equipment and our hardware. So yeah, there was, it was a collaborative effort of, of all the employees to try to get the numbers right so we could get this grant right.
So you guys and gals worked diligently to, to get this money, 2.1, God willing, it'll come through for us. Let's hope and pray.
We'll see.
How many pages was that grant?
It was very thick, very long.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
About maybe half a ream of paper?
Killed a tree.
You killed a tree.
When I printed it out and put it in the book upstairs today, it, yeah, we, 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 we put a lot of paper in there.
The reason why I'm asking these questions and, and leading you down the road on this is because I really, I honest God, I want people to understand, there's a lot of good people in this township that work for this township that really come to work, love their job, love who they work with and for the 31,000 people, and do their due diligence. And nobody sits on their duffs. You guys, along with all of us, are doing what we can to help people. Now, this isn't a parade of patting each other on the back, but I do believe, as God is my witness, people that do good work should be recognized. And I want to thank you, Chief, Township Commissioner Falk, Lieutenant Arrendis, and all the other folks that had any input into this. Much, many, many thanks for the hard work because I know that paperwork ain't easy to get through.
That was difficult.
Thank you.
And tomorrow morning, Harry and I will be opening up another grant tomorrow morning. It only opens on Fridays. So, which is very odd, but it's a grant that only opens on Fridays. So tomorrow morning, we'll be popping that one open and starting on that one.
I'm sure I can say on my behalf and the folks in Ward 7 and probably everybody else, thank you so much for putting forth this tremendous effort. And, and God willing, it'll go our way.
I hope, I hope so. We'll see. Our fingers crossed.
Appreciate it, Chief.
You're welcome.
So back to, back to the budget update. So the total expenditure for the 2023 budget out of all the, all your, all your funds is $17,63,208. And that is it for the budget update. Is there any questions about those line, or those funds? That is the end of my report, Chairman.
I actually did just have one or two questions on the budget draft, not the stuff you reviewed tonight. But for the grants, looking at, I guess, a line item ending in 15000, the recycling performance grant, is that because our trash contract changed why we're not budgeting anything for the future?
No, I, I do not budget for the grants.
Okay.
Because they're not always guaranteed, but, but Assistant Manager Turley did submit for the grant for this year.
Okay.
For it, we just have not received the funds yet.
All right, I understand. And then the other question I did have was under recreation programs, ticket sales, a line item, 01367300.
Okay.
I was just wondering where the 20,000 number came, it's coming from.
That's going to be ticket sales for, for like the father-daughter dance.
Okay.
Ticket sales that we do for the Kennywood tickets discounts.
So it was maybe a line item that was somewhere before.
Correct. Before those items were taken out of the, the expenditure, so it was drawing down. So it looked like we were spending less, but we really worked.
All right, sounds good. There are my only two questions. Anybody else have any questions on the budget? Thank you, Manager Falk. Planning and engineering topics, Director Fonzie.
There were four items that came through the planning commission last week. The first one is subdivision 18 of 2022. This is the Arnold and Smith Plan. This is a 95 and a half acre parcel owned by two couples, Brett and Alyssa Arnold and Andrew and Jenna Smith. They own these, they want to split it down the middle into two 47.77 acre lots to eventually build single-family homes. The issue with that is, and this is a shot of the zoning of the property, so there's a small strip of residential three property along Legger Road. This is across the road from Waste Management. And the balance of the lot is industrially zoned. Well, our zoning ordinance does not permit single-family homes in the industrial zone. So we need to, they need to get permission essentially. They're, they're applying for a variance from the zoning hearing board to get a use variance to be able to build those homes in the industrial property. If that doesn't happen, they could apply for rezoning. However, I'm not sure how likely that would be. But again, they're at the zoning hearing board now. They did apply for sewage planning approval. I spoke to DEP. They said that the application that they currently have, that currently will submit, will be acceptable. However, it is only for single-family homes. So if they do not get permission to do that, they still would like to subdivide this property because it's an asset between them. So they can subdivide it if there's an industrial use down the road on either lot. They would have to amend their sewage planning at DEP. So again, I had a lengthy conversation with, with DEP about this one. So planning commission approved this for the subdivision. We're not granting any building of the house. That's in the zoning hearing board's hands at this point. So they truly just want to split the lot. Any questions on that one?
I just have a, a use variance. There's no hardship here. I mean, it, there's, tell me what the hardship is that would give rise to granting a use variance, which is extremely difficult to get under zoning. I mean, usually, use variances are left-handed ways of rezoning. And I mean, really, this, this should really come before the board for rezoning, in my humble opinion. That's, that's who should be doing, to grant a use variance is really kind of a fiction. If somebody challenges this, they're never going to get it through the courts because there's no hardship. Now, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in this, but why aren't they proceeding with just rezoning the property? What, why didn't they do, which would mean they would come to us?
Um, I mean, they had two options.
Were they worried that we were going to turn it down? I mean, that would be the only reason I would think that they would not come to the board.
Yeah, I just thought that the, the use variance was a way to preserve the industrial zone of the property. I think I, maybe I shouldn't have assumed, but it would be hard to rezone almost 100 acres of industrial property into more residential property, which we already have. So again, they could still come through the Board of Commissioners.
There's no question that if they get turned down at the zoning hearing board, they could come to the board with a rezoning. It's just, it seems to, I just want everybody to understand what a use variance is. It's an extremely difficult use. You're saying that this property had, from a legal standpoint, this property has no value. We can't build industrial on this property. So therefore, grant us a use variance to build residential. And there, there just isn't any, any, in the legal sense, hardship that is affixed to this property. That's just my, my background in the, in the zoning area. Again, if they've applied for the use variance and nobody objects to it, it probably is going to go through. But this is one of these times, again, where we're using the zoning hearing board as a vehicle to, to get to an end that should really be done through rezoning. And that's all I'm going to say about it.
Would this be a way for them to come out winners on either side? Like build a house there if residential and, but maintain it industrial in case, in case something industrial comes up later, and then at that time, rezone, subdivide again the parcel with the house on it, rezone that, or?
All that stuff is possible.
Yeah, that sounds.
I mean, you understand, zoning is, is a fairly regimented thing. And this is, this is an invention to do something that ordinarily would be done through rezoning. Just so everybody hears it. And once you hear it and you're okay with it, then go ahead and let it.
What we're just approving right now, that's in front of us, will be approved next week.
That's all you're doing, subdivision.
Subdivision.
Just the splitting of the lot, correct.
I won't say another word about it.
And, and I would like to say another word about it, if you forgive me. I, at the planning commission, there was an assurance that it is simply dividing the property.
That's all the subdivision is.
And when, when an owner buys a piece of property, they should know what the zoning exists when they purchase it.
Especially 95 acres.
95 acres, you should know what you're buying when you're buying it. So.
But again, subdivision, this subdivision's illegitimate. I mean, that, there's nothing wrong with that. They want to subdivide it into two 45 acre lots, that's fine. And that's all just before you tonight.
Okay. Next item is site plan 16 of 2022. This is the Pizza Marsala Site Plan. This is at 11671 State Route 30. This is the building, vacant building next to the lighthouse building, just up from Bach Insurance. And we had issued a stop work order on the owner earlier this year. There were some concrete slabs that were being poured. And then in talking to the owner, we, we discussed what was going on. And it just seemed like there was more changes that needed to happen outside of the building permitting process. So he's before us for a site plan approval. And he's asking for a couple of waivers from the SADO and a couple of modifications. The first one, the first waiver would be Section 511.8, which states the edge of any parking area should not be closer to 10, than 10 feet to the outside wall of the nearest building. They're asking for this waiver because this is an existing building with an existing parking lot. So those spaces were already right at the edge of the sidewalk, leading outside of the front door. We have asked the applicant to place bollards there at the edge of these parking spaces to protect any vehicles from, from going into the building accidentally. The other waiver is Section 307.D. This is actually in our stormwater management ordinance, which states post-construction stormwater infiltration of runoff may replicate pre-construction infiltration of runoff to the maximum extent possible. They state because the site's already paved, they're, they're designing it for zero infiltration. So they will have a stormwater management plan with a couple rain gardens on the property. So they're asking for a waiver from that requirement. A modification that they're asking for is from Section 511.9, which states all dead-end parking areas shall be designed to provide sufficient area for backing and turning movements from the end parking spaces of the parking area. Our standard detail 35 requires a 20-foot wide drive aisle. So on the western side of the building, you can see these, these double arrows. This parking area will dead-end right here. The parking width is 24 feet, except for where this, this bump out of the building is. That's going to be actually a concrete pad with, that will be covered. So for these two spots, spaces 22 and 23, that driveway width will probably be around 21 feet approximately. So they're asking for the modification on those two spaces. And then the last modification is Section 516, which states existing healthy vegetation may be sufficient to meet overall landscaping requirements. So the rear of that hill does have some vegetation, and it has to act as a buffer as well because there is a budding residential property downhill on Clifton Drive, as this is owned, C1 Commercial. So we asked that the applicant actually label that as a buffer zone and, and keep the vegetation there because it actually is helping hold the hill in place. Couple other conditions that'll be required are just stormwater management approved by Conservation District, the standard O and M agreement for operation and maintenance of the stormwater system. And then we still need some clarification from PennDOT to address the existing driveway. So PennDOT's aware of it. We're just waiting to hear their response. And then a developer's agreement with the township. So the owner is here. If you have any questions for him, or if you have more questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay.
This, this was a site of a slide some time ago. Is that right?
Yeah, there was, I, I found letters. There was some remediation done in 2012, I believe. I think John Brensel had come in and kind of was working on the toe of the slope and, but yeah, there, there was a, I think it was called Giggles, Giggles Bar. And then they had, they had a deck actually on the eastern side that was built. And they were experiencing some slides. I want to say that was in the early 2000s.
Wasn't there a slide that actually encroached on a house? I don't know if it damaged it on the lower street?
Down below.
Yeah. I thought that was pretty significant. My concern is the rain, rain gardens, if we soften that dirt by letting it absorb water.
Well, the, I, the, all three rain gardens are actually in green. They're, they're kind of on the original compacted site. So the, the site starts to drop off. They're they're kind of on the original compacted site, so the the site starts to drop off right around here, so that's where the slope would be. So it's up top, and there would be drainage pipes taking, carrying it off the site. So that's being reviewed right now by our our engineer.
Okay.
But I know that the the Lighthouse Building, they they had some issues there, too, because there's a large retaining wall in the back, and I don't know if that had encroached on some homes down below, too, but I mean, there was something here. Like I said, I did find some letters from the township to Brenzel and back and forth about that remediation, but then, at that point, I think in 2016 or 2015, our township engineer at the time had signed off on the repairs and the remediation. Okay, the third item is subdivision 19 of 2022, the Almeida-Brenzel Plan. This is at Bridge Bridge Street, just east of the Turnpike. Almeida-Brenzel owns 10.607 acres of industrially zoned property. There's actually an existing home that is nonconforming, so that house has been there for, I think they said almost 90, 80, 90 years. So Mrs. Brenzel would like to subdivide 0.59 acres around the existing home and leave the remaining industrial land vacant, which is just over 10. 10.088 acres. They will also need sewage planning approval from DEP, and the planning commission recommended this for approval as well, so I'm working with the surveyor to get that sewage application in. Any questions on this one? Okay. And the last one is subdivision 20 of 2022, the Timco-Nichols Plan. This is on Turner Valley Road, obviously in Turner Valley. This is just a a simple boundary boundary line revision. The Nichols property line with the the Timcos actually goes over part of their driveway, so this this green wedge is the land that the Nichols will be acquiring to fully encompass their driveway. So so both lots meet the minimum dimensional requirements for an R3 zoning district, so this is just truly to get the driveway on the on the correct property. Any questions with that one? Okay, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fonzie.
I'm curious, can I ask the solicitor one question first? The previous. She asked the way we asked. The sound of the. We have a statement. We have a statement. She knows. Thank you.
All right. Any further board comments? Not, just need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all unfair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Mean and adjourned.
Time.
Executive session will follow, 8:18.